All right, it's about that time. All right, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. At this time, I'd like to call the May 2022 Planning Commission meeting to order. Jessica, can you give us a roll call, please?
Phil Chancellor.
Here.
Nonette Reese.
Here.
Robin Bridges. Warren McCord. Bob Brittenbach.
Here.
Wendy Birmingham.
Here.
Marcus Marshall.
Here.
Joseph H. Strip.
Here.
Janet Jagger.
Here.
Okay, before we get started, especially since we have quite the crowd here tonight, I'd like to kind of go over the rules of the road for the process that we're going to have here tonight. And so what will happen is the commission's going to be presented different items by the city staff, the planning staff, and then a representative for that item will have a chance to say anything if they would like. And then I'll open a public hearing if it's appropriate. Some things do require a public, some do not. And then that's when it'll be your time to come up and tell us what you think about that item, that issue, and if you can keep your comments to five minutes and focus on the topic at hand. We would appreciate that. Once everybody's spoken, I'll close the public hearing, and then we will have maybe some discussion for clarification, and then a motion, and some, a final discussion, and a vote. So the commission is going to vote based on state and local laws, the city's comprehensive 2030 plan, and the general good of the community. In addition to the voting process, the voting process I just talked about, I'd also like to kind of summarize our roles with the response, with related to the subdivision plaits. We're the final authority for subdivision plaits, and so we, as a municipal planning commission such as ours, we're going to, we make a final call on these plaits, and we're only an administrative body. So what we have to be able to do is if the plaits meet a certain set of criteria, we basically have to vote it for it. We can't, so you have to kind of be patient with us in that case because if they meet the criteria, then it's going to pass, basically. So while public hearings are required on the preliminary plaits, you know, we just have to confirm that the plat meets or exceeds certain criteria. And then finally, I'd like to make the point that except for the subdivision plaits, anything that we vote for, vote on here is going to be a recommendation to the city council. So there will be another chance for anybody to talk to the city council about the same issues as we pass it on. Okay, the first order of business is citizens' communication, and at this time, we would, we ask that if you'd like to speak about anything on the consent agenda or anything that has nothing to do with the planning commission proceedings at all. So if you have something that you want to talk about that's not related, now's the time to come, and then when we talk about the various items later, then we'll address those at that time. So would anybody like to speak about the consent agenda or something else? Okay, seeing no one, I will close that action. And then we move on to the consent agenda. Are there any staff additional comments about the consent agenda? It's time.
No, sir.
Okay. No motion?
I'm going to approve consent agenda of three items, including the additional minutes from packet and regular April meetings.
Second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, say no, motion carries. On new business, the first item is a conditional use. It's Boulevard Phase Five, CU 2022-015, Ms. Robinson.
That is correct. Good evening. I forgot to click it. Good practicing.
Can't have that.
Okay, this is a request for conditional use for 40 units of a multiple unit development and three academic detached dwelling units, or ADDUs. The property is the fifth phase of the Boulevard, which is off of Harper Avenue. This phase is comprised of just over four and a half, or little less than four and a half acres adjacent to the railroad track, CSX. Let me see if I can get it back to the red dot. See, gosh, see, my practice didn't go well. There we go. Okay. The property has frontage along Old Stage Road as well as Bryant Avenue and Bryant Circle. The portion along the railroad track was formerly CSX right-of-way, which has been sold to the developer, so it is now a lot of record. Giddon Street off of Harper stubs out to this property here. And then the three ADDUs will be right here. As I mentioned, this is the fifth phase of the Boulevard. The 40 additional multifamily units and the ADDUs would put the total number at 139 units. The proposed density is nine, eight, nine units an acre, and the MDRD zoning district allows 12. However, the future land use of medium-high-density residential proposes eight dwelling units an acre. However, it is in keeping with the existing development, and we do recommend forwarding to it to city council for approval with conditions. And those conditions are dedicating additional right-of-way along Bryant Avenue as well as continuing the stubout of Giddon Street into the development. And I did not receive any correspondence on this case, but would be happy to answer any questions if you guys have any.
Are those conditions in the notes?
Uh, yes, they are.
I'm just missing it.
Right under D.
Oh, under D.
Three. Thank you.
I don't guess I ever got to the site plan, did I? No.
Okay. All right, thank you. Would a representative like to speak on this? Good afternoon.
Parker Lewis with Hydro Engineering Solutions. Here with Mike Swope and Brian Austin, they're the owners, developers. Got a little bit of clarification from staff today, which was, which was good and helpful. Before the meeting, those two conditions that are part of the approval, just wanted to touch on both of those. The language associated with, with the first one in terms of additional widening, widening of Bryant Avenue and additional right-of-way dedicated, we, we only control about 20% of that Bryant Avenue right-of-way. So, but we will, we understand the comment from staff, and we'll work with them on that sort of Bryant right-of-way and configuration of that road. The second one, though, however, is one that we would like to request be removed as a condition. I don't know if you've had a chance to maybe go out there once this packet hit your desk, but Giddon Street is a very narrow, really like a one-lane drive. It's, it looks more like a driveway. The church owns property to the west of Giddon, and it's an asphalt parking lot. And, and so the street asphalt and the parking lot asphalt really just sort of merged together. There's, there's really only one or two residences, I think, maybe at the, at the end of that dead end. We understand why staff made the comment in terms of connecting to Giddon. It would probably, it may help us a little bit with connectivity, but it really would probably be an extreme negative, I think, for the church since it's their church parking and sort of a narrow configuration of roadway. So we would just like to request that, that that second condition not have to happen, not be part of the use of people.
So where's, where's access coming from then?
So our access, oh. Do I have this? Oh, I'm not sure I can.
Do you have to go up and around?
Y'all got fancy. Hold on, let's switch this to top one. Is that a power button? Am I going to shut it down?
If you hold down the top one.
All right, so, well, let me go. Let me go to here. This is maybe the best one. So you see right here is Giddon Street to the east. Our driveway into Phase Four is only like 250 feet to the west of Giddon. So our driveway that we connect to, to Harper is actually wider than Giddon Street is. It's a nice two-lane driveway. Oops, sorry, somebody changed it on me. Whoops.
It's hard.
Sorry.
He's out of control.
I didn't look at it. I was staring at that thing. All right, there we go. I'm going to set that down. So I don't know if you can, if you can see that. That's sort of a tight scale, but you see, you see, well, shoot, I don't know that you can, but anyway, so right here is this phase.
Okay.
And, and there's the Giddon Street connection. And our dr, this phase is coming off this little driveway that comes right down to get, to Harper.
Okay, so you'd go north and then, then hang it right in this access.
Exactly. You go north off of Harper and turn right into this little sort of enclave.
Is there, but that's the only ingress, egress? What else is?
Oh, that's, that's the closest one on Harper, but there's like three ways out of the, there's like, I think, three connections to Harper.
Going, oh, to Harper.
Yeah, over to Harper. And then, and then this, this would come over, if you come over, you just go right up through here, back out to Bryant.
Okay.
So there's multiple ways in and out even without the Giddon connection.
The Bryant connects to Summerhill. Is that correct?
Bryant ties into Summerhill, correct.
So you can get in there, you can get in on the, I know there's two, I drove the site to look at it, but. And then there's the two, maybe three, three onto Harper already. And did you say there's going to be one onto Stage Road, or am I wrong?
There's not one currently shown. I will look at that a little bit tighter when we deal with staff in terms of the act, the, the impacts to Bryant. There's a possibility we may revise this layout a little bit and go to Stage instead of going to Bryant. We, we never really need to work with engineering staff a little bit tighter on, on that final determination.
But there's a, at a minimum, two, but maybe three already.
There's at least two onto Harper, and there, I can't remember if there's a third one on that far west end, or maybe just two. We did not do the, is it two? Yeah, we didn't do the first couple of phases of Boulevard, so I don't, I'm not sure.
I mean, I went in one and went out the other, but I, and drive, and drive down Giddon, so.
And be happy to answer any, any questions.
Okay, thank you.
Can you make sure to sign in, please, right there? Yes, thank you.
Okay, this requires a public hearing, so at this time I'll open the public hearing. Would anybody like to come forward to speak on this item? When you're done, can you just sign in on the same pad he's working on there? Thanks.
Good evening. My name is Greg Sanuski. I am the property owner of those two residences at the end of Giddon Street that we just got through talking about. We bought them back in 2003 and, and owned them since then. Over the years, the development north of us and to the, I guess it's to the, to the east of us, the building that's gone on, the driveways that have been put in and so forth, have caused us a terrible water problem. We are to the point where I can't mow right now, right now, since the last rain. It's not, hadn't drained off yet. There's, I don't know what the name of this street is out here, but from there to Giddon Street is a drop of about 17 feet in elevation. So that's what's happening between the new surf, the surface areas that have been put in since we bought. And, and now, that's what's caused, caused the problem. Now I see the development is coming in, and then we're going to have more surface, more roof surface, more water runoff, and I'm scared to death we're going to go get underwater. I've got no complaint with, with Boulevard and all that. I'm just asking, I'm making a plea to the developer to please not be aware of this and when, when they start their building and so forth. We are on a low spot there, so. Thanks for hearing me out. I appreciate it.
Good, thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. Matthew Hall, I live at 559 Bryant Avenue. I think it's the, the site at the lower right corner of the upper part of the development. And I guess, is it okay to ask some questions about?
Sure, ask away.
I was curious if the development in the increased right-of-way on Bryant Avenue will have curbs and sidewalks and stormwater management, or is that not a part of the proposal?
Well, go ahead and ask your questions. We'll address them all. So curb sidewalks?
Yeah. I'm curious about the street widening, where exactly that's going to happen.
On which street?
On Bryant Avenue and Bryant Circle. I'm also curious, it's hard to read from the plan what the rear setback is going to be for the development on the adjacent properties. I know I can see it written there, but I can't quite read it. And then I can tell from, a lot of my questions in the plan have been shown in terms of the off-street parking, and then also the kind of heights and scale of the buildings, if they're going to be similar to the existing Boulevard development to the west. Those are questions, and I have just a couple of short comments. That's acceptable. New to the neighborhood in 2019, my wife and I built a house that is obviously a little strange. Teach at the architecture school, so it's part of my job description to build a weird house. But one of the things we were very concerned about in the neighborhood and talking to the neighbors before we built was to keep the scale of the house down. So we have actually the lowest house in the neighborhood for its size. So progress is inevitable, and I think the plan is reasonable, and we knew it was going to happen eventually. But just to comment, it's, we have very few neighborhoods of this scale in Auburn that are left. This is an interesting kind of little landlocked circle, wonderful scale of homes. And it would be nice to see whether the development, at least as it fronts Bryant Circle, since it's kind of toothing in and out of existing single-family residences, if the scale can be, I don't know, kind of respectful or in keeping with the existing fabric of the neighborhood. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Please sign in.
I'll do it.
Any other else like to speak? All right, seeing no one, I'm going to close the public hearing. Let's try to address some of that. Maybe Mr. Lewis, you might be able to help us on that probably better than anybody else.
Sure.
Curbs, I wrote something, so curb sidewalks, you know, how, how's all that?
Yeah, and I think that's what we really need to work with staff a little bit more on. Right now, I think Bryant's like a 30-foot ride, right-of-way, which is fine really for a one-lane road. It's sort of funk, a one-way road. It sort of functions one way, sort of. I've been on there where a lot of folks kind of go the same way, but then I, someone was coming the other way when I was out there a week or two ago. So I think one of the things we got to work out with staff would be, would it be a curb-and-gutter street that's one-way so that right, new right-of-way is not needed? Or do they want right-of-way so that they can make it curb-and-gutter and two-way? That's really what we haven't worked out. The only city streets that don't have curb-and-gutter will, are old streets like this or streets that are in more of a rural setting. Our city standards are curb-and-gutter and sidewalks and things. I don't really know what staff may be thinking long-term for Bryant. And, and of course, then.
That remains to be seen.
Remains to be seen, yeah, and if you, if it's 30 feet and you go to 50, then that's getting 10 feet of property from people on both sides of the street. You know, the, I don't know if these neighbors want to give right-of-way. I don't, I don't know what our options are. Sometimes you can, the city will do easements instead of right-of-way so people don't lose property, but they still have, you know, curb-and-gutter and sidewalk and stuff. So great questions, legit questions, don't really have answers tonight on that.
How about the rear setback?
Those are 15-foot buffer yard. This MDRD is a half to one angle of light, and so I think a lot of, to answer one of the questions, yes, these will be similar buildings as the rest of the Boulevard. It will be in that same style.
Okay, and then I guess we were also asking about the, the scale of the house as you get closer to the existing homes that are built, which I guess on the
East side of the property.
So you're not going to scale them down? They're basically going to be the same?
Yeah, I think so. I think, yes, I think it'll be the same, same scale as the rest of the Boulevard. Are you, are you in the concrete block house?
Yeah.
That's cool. I like that. Yeah, I was wondering who, I was wondering who that did, yeah. So anyway, yeah, drive-through there, it's pretty cool if you get a chance. But anyway, it'll be similar in style. I do see what he's saying in terms of trying to keep the scale, and that's something that, that, you know, the owners may want to think through a little bit, little bit further with those couple of houses that are really, couple that front Bryant, and then a couple that are adjacent to Bryant. Maybe the kind of thing we change unit types and, and do some two stories instead of three stories or whatever. So we'll have to look at that.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, so I also have a question. Thanks, that's good, thanks, Ms. Parker. This is kind of a question maybe for staff. I think it's engineering. Is it engineering comments that ask for Giddon Street? So what's behind wanting to use that as access to this property as opposed to what's already existing?
It's more so secondary access and just addition, an additional connection point to the development from a street that's been stubbed out to it for many, many years. The primary access will be, in my estimation, off of Bryant Circle onto Summerhill and then back through the existing Boulevard development.
Okay. All right, any other questions for clarification or motion?
Question of flooding also?
I was about to ask that question.
Yeah, go ahead and ask the.
But if there was a question about that, that one of the properties had been flooded quite a bit since the development, I was wondering about that.
Yeah, so that was the first time I've heard of it. I don't recall that we've received that in our office previously, but the engineer is in the room. He's very, very close to me, so as we begin to, as he begins to develop the engineering plans, we'll definitely take a look to make sure we're not adversely impacting that residence.
Because if there are issues like that, that's just a matter of city being made aware of it, and then there are mitigation efforts that go from there, right?
Yes, we can look into it separately from the development, but we definitely don't want the development to make it any worse.
Sure, okay.
Yeah, we'll definitely look at that. I, I'm curious about that because I don't believe there's been, what, what drains onto that property has not been developed. It's really Bryant Avenue that drains down his lot, so we need to look at that further. I don't know that that's a change from adjacent development or if there's something else going on there.
But we'll, we'll look, yeah, so we'll look at that and then we'll be okay.
Is it possible that like some regressing and stuff during the development, like, would it possibly improve?
Improve it, possibly, yeah, yeah. It's, we've had some.
If it's done with kind of that in mind?
Yeah. And I don't know, I think he said he hadn't owned it very long. So it is curious that what's going on there. We need to look at it, but, you know, a lot of folks in town that have owned property for 20 and 30 and 50 years have said, "I've never seen it flood like this," and we, we do have, climate change is real. I mean, we've had, we've had odd rain events. I mean, our historic rain data is not really applicable right now, which is a larger conversation. But, but I don't know what's going on there because I don't, because what's north of him and what drains on him, I don't believe has been developed at all because it's this Bryant Avenue area. So need to look at that.
All right, thanks. Any further, any more comments or have a motion?
I, I would like to ask a question of engineering on the, the Giddon Street expansion. Have you thought about the impact upon the church and the church parking lot?
Yes.
Have you talked to the church about that?
I have not spoken with the bishop about that. One of the things that we look at is always additional connection points to development. Did consider the church as an off-peak time, usually just on Sundays, sometimes on Wednesdays. There's a parking lot, good visibility, and I didn't, I don't expect a lot of cut-through, as people would call it, from the Boulevard, but again, it would be a secondary means of access from the development to Harper if necessary.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chairman. We, we just want to make sure. I know you opened the public hearing. Did you close the public hearing? Thank you, sir.
Put this in my hand.
Can I get some clarification on how to make the motion if I would like to request the removal of a condition? Do I need to make the motion first and then amend the motion, or can I make it all at once?
Make it all at once, I would agree.
All right, then that's what I will do. I would like to make a motion to approve case CU 2022-015 Boulevard Phase Five with all staff comments with the exception of the removal of the connection to Giddon Street.
Condition number two.
Condition number two.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Motion is seconded. Discussion on the motion. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, say no. Motion carries. Okay, item number five, conditional use Taco Bell, CU 2022-016, Ms. Shepherd.
Yes, this is a conditional use request to allow a road surface use, fast food restaurant with a drive-through at 1365 North Donahue, which is going to be a Taco Bell. This is the site location. It's 1.61 acres. It is currently undeveloped, and the land use plan calls this to be gateway commercial. And the land use plan calls this to be gateway commercial corridor, so a commercial use would be appropriate here. To the northwest are residential units, and then to the south is a gas station, some commercial, retail, and two other fast-food restaurants with drive-throughs as well. The property is zoned CDD with a PDD overlay, which is the same as the entire surrounding area, so it does fit in with what is going on at that intersection. This is the site plan that has been provided. It shows a restaurant that is 2,551 square feet with a small patio area right here. There is one drive-through lane and one pass-by lane. I'm not sure if that's the correct terminology. The menu box is located right around here at the northeast corner, closest to North Donahue, so this is where the cars would stack up. Staff recommends approval with conditions, and we would like to point out the removal of the planning condition number one. That one is about materials. That one does not apply anymore.
That's the one about the...
Yes, ma'am. We've gotten clarification. There will not be metal, so we don't have to worry about that.
So they're gonna, they're gonna...
It's gonna be a painted sealed product. That looks like that.
That's consistent with gateway type.
Yes, yes. We'll make sure of all of that, and their landscaping and their buffering will be consistent as well.
It'll be further reviewed at DRT when it comes.
Yes. And we have received one correspondence regarding this. It is from the gentleman who is the owner of this access lane right here, and I, he is here to talk to you about that as well. Do you have any questions for me?
Sure would like to hear about the access road, though.
I will let, I will let him speak to that after. The applicant is here as well, though.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, at this time, let me say I'm gonna recuse myself from this matter also.
I'm Stephen Benson. I represent Land and Timber, who owns that driveway. It is a private driveway. We've had no communication from Takala regarding any request to access that. There is actually property that, that Land and Timber owns between that driveway and this vacant lot. So as we see it right now...
Wait a minute, let me make sure I understood that part. So you're saying you own, you own the private driveway, but there's also a slice of land between your driveway and this parcel?
That is correct. So they, there's been no communication with us regarding that.
So there's two different entities that would have to be contacted?
Same entity. Land, Land and Timber owns the strip. Land and Timber owns the driveway, and it's privately owned. So there's no way that they can connect to the private street.
Okay. Let's see.
Any other questions?
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, I do. Do you, do you oppose? Does Land and Timber oppose granting access to Taco Bell?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Would the representative like to come up and speak?
Mike Gray with Takala, and the things that he was mentioning is, those are normally things that we do after conditional use, so we have to make sure that we're approved, and so that's why we're here tonight, that we would work with engineering staff. And also, we would not be the landowner, so that would be a communication that generally happens from the landowner to that which owns the private drive. We understand that in this district and then along that corridor that we're not gonna have access to Donahue Drive, so again, upon acceptance of conditional use, we will then make all those other efforts. But I'd be happy to answer any other questions.
Okay, thank you. Okay, this requires a public hearing, so I'll open the public hearing at this time. Anybody who would like to come forward and speak, please do. Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Okay, so this is a conditional use, and so the issue of the access is not really before us, so we just have to worry about the conditional use at this point, so. Do you have any questions for staff or, or a motion?
So, to clarify, we're, we're, we're just talking conditional use for the Taco Bell. We're not worried about access at this point.
It's not before us.
Okay, thank you.
Motion?
All right, I'll make a motion to approve CU 2022-016 with all...
We have to remove one comment, right?
With the, do I need to make, put that in the motion? With the removal of the first condition under planning, number one.
Second? Have a motion in the second? Any discussion about the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion carries. Number six is another conditional use, Circle K, CU 2022-017. Ms. Shepherd again.
Yes, this is another conditional use. This one is for another road service use. It is for a gasoline service station, and this is going to be at the southwest corner of Shelton Mill Road and Highway 280. If approved, it would be a Circle K gas station and convenience store. This property is located in both the city of Auburn and the city of Opelika. The smaller piece right here along Shelton Mill Road, it's about one acre, that is in the city of Opelika. This larger parcel over here is in the city of Auburn, and it is about four acres, and the building will straddle both, but the building will be primarily in Opelika, but also in Auburn. They did go to the planning commission in Opelika for conditional use, and that was approved, and that does not go before council in Opelika, so that was approved there, and now they are here asking...
So you're saying that the city council up there would not have to do any further action on that?
No, no, sir. Yeah, in Opelika, they approved the conditional use at planning commission. So now they're here asking for the conditional use in Auburn as well. The future land use plan designates this as gateway commercial corridor, so a gas station commercial use would be appropriate. The Auburn part of the property is zone CDD, and to the north and east is Opelika, and to the south is a residential, single-family neighborhood. It's zone DDH. Shelton Cove, sorry. And so that would back right up to this property right here. This is the original site plan that we received, that you have all seen before. It shows a building that is about 5,172 square feet. It has regular gasoline pumps in the front and diesel pumps in the back. There's access from Shelton Mill and from Highway 280. And if you can see, there is a faint line of, of what is in Auburn. That's, maybe this is Auburn? And so far with their site plan, they have met both our requirements and Opelika's regarding buffer yards, regarding landscaping, and I'm assuming that there's gonna be a lot more further discussion at a later time on meeting other important things as well. Then we talked to them, and today we received a revised plan where they moved this driveway further south on Shelton Cove, and then they moved the diesel pumps further west and further north. So they have doubled kind of the distance of where they were right here. Staff does recommend approval with, again, the removal of the first planning condition, because it's addressed in Water Resource Management, and we do not need it twice. Are there any questions that I can answer at this time, because a lot of them that you may have cannot be answered now?
So what's the, do you know about the distance between the, the diesel pumps that I'm thinking about right now?
The applicant is here, and we just received these today, so I didn't get a chance to measure it. I just noticed the, the difference in it. We received them at one o'clock, but I did not have a chance.
I'd like to know the difference between the pumps and the house.
Yes, yes, because it does back up to... Where's my...
Backs up to the neighborhood there.
Yes, it does, to their rear yards. You cannot see that. It backs up to their rear yards, yes.
Would you go back to the, the new plans?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
This is just one of them. They sent several, but they all had the same essential changes. The parking stayed the same and, and all other requirements. They, they just moved those two things. They may have done more, but I didn't get a chance to look that over as of yet.
Thanks. Representative here, we can ask a couple of questions? Come on down.
How you doing?
Good.
John Cowden for the developer.
Okay, and if you don't mind signing in when you walk back?
Yeah.
So can you at least answer a couple of questions for me? I'm, I'm interested in two things. One, the distance between the diesel pumps and e, maybe even the other, the regular pumps in, in the closest home. You have any idea on that one? And then where are the fuel tanks gonna be buried?
Yes, so I can answer all those questions. I'm pulling up the site plan now.
Okay.
The diesel canopy sits about 220 feet from the closest home, and we've measured that out. And we also sit about 160 feet from where the closest yard ends. You'll see if you look on an aerial, this'll, it's a heavily wooded area between the home and our development. The tank farm will be in front of our site.
What does that, what does that mean?
The underground store?
It's the underground storage is what I'm asking about, yeah.
Yeah, we call it tank farm.
Okay.
That'll sit between the front canopy. You can see it up there. Yes, sir.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, just for clarification, that would include the diesel is out in that same exact area as well?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
All right. That answers my question. Anybody have any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Awesome. There are a couple points that we wanted to make as far as the conditions.
Okay.
The first point that we wanted to bring up and really object to is, under engineering, line item number two, the vehicular connectivity should provide to Turnberry Lane. And if you'll see, I don't know if now is the time to discuss it, but to create a driveway that goes through that neighborhood, if I was a resident of that neighborhood, I probably wouldn't want a commercial drive emptying into my neighborhood. And so while I'm not a, a member of that community, I'd like to be a good developer and a good neighbor and not let commercial traffic drive through.
That's what I'm doing.
The third one?
That's what I'm doing.
Okay.
And your site is relatively far from that, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
I mean, not, I'm familiar with the, with that neighborhood, but...
So you'd have to put some sort of a road access from your facility all the way over to that stubout?
Yes, yeah, we would, and we can. I just, I'm weary of the traffic that would drive through. So I'd, I'd like to motion for that to be removed. If there are any questions, I can field them. The second point that we'd like to discuss and really object to is the accommodation of the right and left turn lanes coming off Shelton Mill. So what, you may or may not be able to...
I don't see that there is such a thing.
Right, we did not site plan them.
Oh, okay.
We didn't. They were comments and conditions for the approval, but we didn't site plan them because they're gonna be incredibly difficult to satisfy. What you can't see on this site plan is there's actually a lift station on the...
There's a what station?
There's a lift station in the right-of-way?
A lift station lifts sanitary sewer material and pumps it to a sewer main, whether it's gravity or force.
And where's that at?
It's right...
In the middle of the right-of-way? Or in the middle of the driveway?
It is not Auburn's, and so that's the extent of what our Water Resources Management knows, but there is a lift station there.
Oh, okay. That's just... Okay.
And so being that we, being that we can't pave over it, it's, it would be incredibly difficult to move, and since we can't determine who owns it, I don't know if the neighborhood owns it or if the...
Sewer authority of Auburn.
Or Opelika, either.
Or Opelika.
Right. Moving it would cause a lot of issues, especially with its functionality. I'm assuming that it services the same neighborhood that we're discussing, and if we have to move it, we're gonna put them in jeopardy for some time. So I would like to motion to remove the sixth condition, to add that right and left turn lane. We can satisfy a portion...
Third condition?
Third condition.
That's our engineering condition.
Third engineering condition. I apologize.
So you don't want it relocated to the south?
We don't want to relocate the lift station, but we do, are happy to push our entrance further to the south.
Right, and we saw that with your new site plans. Is that what you're thinking?
Yes, sir, exactly.
Thank you.
So, so basically you're saying you can relocate it further to the south, but, but not have the right, so it's, what is it, how is it gonna be oriented?
Yes, so we can push the, the entrance, the ingress and egress, further to the south. And it'll be situated at approximately seventy-five feet from the center of BP's curb cut, right? Now, the standard's a hundred feet. We can push it seventy-five, and that's just as far as our property allows it to go. Happy to do that to accommodate the traffic, but what we can't accommodate, or, or gonna be very, very difficult to accommodate, is moving that lift station and adding the right diesel lane and the left diesel lane.
Could we move to the, to the new site plan as opposed to looking at the old one? There we go. So this is what you propose to do?
Yes, sir, exactly.
And that lift station's kind of halfway up that, where the parking lot, the parking spaces are?
Try and...
Just to the right.
Where's the quicker? I think it's up there.
I'm having trouble visualizing the...
All right, where's the lift station?
Diesel lanes.
Where is it? The lift, it's right around...
Right?
A little further up.
A little further up, right around.
Okay.
A little more, a little more south?
I can't see anything from here. Okay, yeah, it's about here.
Mr. Chairman, may I clarify one quick thing?
I have lots of questions.
Let me just clarify this one quick thing, not to interrupt the applicant. The, the additional lanes are required by our design manuals, so that is not something you have the authority to give him relief on. We noted that because we need the entrance moved really to support those, so I just wanted to clarify that. So don't get into the additional lane comment. That doesn't technically apply to you, your purview, anyway.
We're doing the conditional use, and there seems to be a lot on here that is outside of just use, I guess. Because I'm confused as to what we're supposed to be actually looking at.
Just conditional use.
Yeah, well, let's go ahead and, okay, that'll be good for right now. Let's go ahead and have a public hearing, and then... So this is, this requires a public hearing. If anybody would like to come forward and speak on it, please do. Okay, seeing no one, I'm gonna close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, could I make a comment? As was mentioned by Morgan, you know, we had talked, we've been communicating really with the applicant for a while now on these various issues. The plan that came in today, it has not been fully reviewed and vetted by staff. So, for instance, engineering hasn't had time to, to look at that and determine if the relocated driveway meets the requirements. I don't think we're prepared to tell you that it does or doesn't at this point in time, so. But, but those are issues that, like you said, it's in the design manual. You can't waive it. I don't know if it meets the requirement or not. So there is the use question. There are, are a lot of things that are submitted with a conditional use application that are pertinent to the use on a site and how it functions and all those types of things. That's, that's why you have more than just, if it was just a question of use, you wouldn't get a site plan. You know, why would you need to look at the site? Because part of it's compatibility with the adjacent properties and things of that nature, so you need to look at it in the context of where it is. That's why you're getting some of this. I have a question for you tonight, is, is, are you satisfied enough with this to recommend approval or denial to the city council? Or do you feel like there are questions that need to still be determined that might warrant that gets postponed or something?
Now, where, you know, especially since this came in today, and there hasn't been enough review, that maybe it, it, it's a good idea to postpone for, you know, for the next meeting, to get this all squared away. That would be one of my, that would be a suggestion I'd have, and what about the rest of the...
Are we just voting on whether it's appropriate for a gas station to be right there or not?
Well, that's, that's part of, that's part of the decision too, but, you know...
Well, it depends on if you're talking about taking staff comments. I guess if we're gonna leave all the staff comments, then we just, you know, that's a different thing, so.
Are we, is this our, are we having our discussion about this now?
Yeah, we're kind of figuring out where we're gonna go. Otherwise, otherwise...
I just want to make sure before I start discussing it.
Oh, we can have a motion too, you know, so.
I mean, just in response to those two... I mean, just in response to those two, engineering, I drive through this intersection a lot, going to two eighty, and it, that corner is very heavily traveled, um, with people coming and going from the lake. So I understand why the, uh, right and left turn lanes are necessary, and, and they, they should be right there. Um, I'm, I'm not in favor of the connectivity down to that neighborhood. Um, there's some distance there and things like that, but I don't know that on a conditional use, we have the ability to remove that, that condition or not.
Which one?
The, the one about connectivity to the, um, residential neighborhood that's directly behind.
Sure we do.
I don't know the history of that and how it came about, or if it was just on a plat there was a stubout. You know, if there's, if there's nothing else, then we can research that more later on. Uh, but in lieu of something that mandates it being there, um, I think that if you're not in favor of that, that would be something that you could go ahead and vote on.
I think it's my question from Allison, would the requirement be to just stub it out all the way up to the, the drive that comes in? It wouldn't, it would, would it necessarily connect to the actual gas station, or could it potentially connect to the actual drive?
It could connect to the actual drive. And it's really a way to, for the residents, if you're in that neighborhood, if you want to go to this, this convenience store, you don't have to get out on Shelton Mill Road to then get back into it.
And I know that's not really our decision to make how it connects, but, um, in, in most of that undeveloped land currently, I know we discussed that there may not be a whole lot that could go there potentially because of some of the water...
There's a detention pond, I believe, in that rectangular area on the southwest, lower left-hand corner. The, the other thing I would remember or remind you to take a look at is that we had planning condition number two that we talked about on Monday, and that was recommending that the diesel pumps not be up against the residential. The, the new plan makes an attempt to relocate that. It doesn't quite satisfy that requirement. So one thing, as a part of your conditional use, you know, determination, I would say if you're satisfied with that modified plan, that that removes it far enough away and provides enough of a bumper, then you would wanna delete that. If you are insistent that it be refined, uh, further, then I would encourage you to leave it in. Makes sense? Any questions on that?
There seems to be a lot of questions left on this one. I guess I'm, I'm kinda leaning towards the chair's suggestion that we leave them up, get some of this stuff ironed out a little bit more. I, I, I think, I think I reflect everybody else's sentiment that the connection to Turnberry Lane doesn't seem to be really in that neighborhood's best interest. Um, but other than that, I'm not quite sure of the rest of it. I would like to see a different design with the diesel pumps.
I, I would, too. I'd like to see the diesel pumps move further away from the residence, and, and maybe a plan that includes the required right and left turn lanes, so we can sort of see what that's gonna look like.
So I hear a motion again?
Since conditional use does fall under sort of health and safety issues, too, so I think that it's important that we make sure it's gonna be safe for the people living there as well. So what will we do? Make a motion to...
A motion to postpone.
Motion to table this, is that what?
Motion to postpone.
Is it postponed to date certain?
Regular meeting.
I make the motion, propose, postpone until the June regular meeting?
Take a second, Dan.
Discussion on that motion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. So that will be postponed until the next meeting.
It's, uh, June ninth.
June ninth. Okay, item number seven, preliminary plat, Sand Hill Acres. Uh, this is a, is PP two zero two two zero zero five. Mr. Kip.
The request before you is a preliminary plat for a conventional subdivision. It's approximately seventy-five acres, and they are requesting to develop twenty-two single-family lots, properties located off Sand Hill Road, uh, south of the quarry and behind the Good Old Boys, uh, restaurant. It is within the city limits and zone rural. And here is the proposed preliminary plat. The, uh, plat, all lots are over three acres and would be serviced by a septic. The plat meets or exceeds the requirements of the subdivision regulation, and so staff recommends approval. We did receive one, um, not necessarily complaint, but a, uh, email from the neighbor to the southeast, mostly with questions. I believe we've addressed all of, all of his questions, and the authorized representative is here to answer any other questions you may have.
Thank you. Would the representative like to speak on this? Come on up.
Hopefully, I won't need that.
And please, yeah, it's kinda hard, it's kinda hard work.
Stay away from that thing. That's right, that's right. Good afternoon.
If you don't mind, sign in when you're done, please.
Yes, sir. Absolutely. Uh, good afternoon, my name's TJ Johnson of Holland Homes, here representing the developer. Um, my intent here is three-acre rural subdivision, like Mr. Kip said. It'd be very similar to our Pear Tree Farms development on the northeast side of town, um, just north of the preserve, and, uh, happy to answer any questions. I did correspond with Mr. DeFor, who I believe Mr. Kip's talking about. Um, we've had several phone conversations. He's a good neighbor. Hopefully, we can be a good neighbor to him as well. But happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you.
Leave that right there.
Okay, this requires a public hearing, so I'll open the public hearing at this time. Would anybody like to come forward and speak on the Sand Hill Acres preliminary plat? Seeing no one, close the public hearing. Questions, comments, motion?
I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve, uh, PC case PP twenty twenty-two zero zero five, with any and all staff comments.
Second.
Uh, motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Uh, the last item is a waiver, subdivision regulation waiver, WZ twenty twenty-two zero zero four. Mr. Kip.
Yes, sir. This is a, uh, waiver to the subdivision regulations of the City of Auburn. The property owners, James and Carolyn Moore, are requesting the waiver to subdivide two lots into four flag lots within the planning jurisdiction. The property is located, um, it's un- currently undeveloped, um, pretty far out from the current city limits. It is not within the city limits, it is not within the optimal boundary, but it is within our planning jurisdiction, so it is subject to, um, City of Auburn subdivision regulations. The intent of limiting flag lots is to reduce the number of driveway conflicts, ensure that land that might come into the city limits will not be in conflict with zoning or comp plan provisions. Uh, given where this property is located, uh, we don't foresee that causing any issues with what they're proposing. Uh, however, we're not able to support the waiver because it does not, uh, they're not deprived of the use of the property, um, as it's currently, uh, recorded. However, again, we don't, we don't foresee any issues if the waiver were to be granted. Uh, driveway spacing and location will all be reviewed by the Lee County Highway Department, um, as it is so far away from any road that the city might come to, uh, maintain. The property owners and the representative are here, and I would be happy to share more about, uh, what they intend to do with the property.
Just to clarify, make sure I understa- so the two lots that are existing right now, there's, so there's two flag lots, and then they, they come south?
No, sir. There are two, they are two conforming lots, um, I believe it's about eighteen acres in total. What they would like to do, and those are represented here in the yellow and blue, that's the two existing lots. I believe it's about a hundred and forty feet of road frontage that they have.
Oh, so it's just a single access, and then it turns...
There's currently, I don't believe there's a driveway there now.
Okay.
Um, what they intend to do is divide it into the four lots that you see, see there, um, and that they can speak more to what they intend to do with the property.
Okay. Uh, with the, can you come up and, uh, tell us, tell us a little bit about it? Can you give us your name and your address and sign in when you're done, please?
Give me. I don't want that. I don't want that.
Wise choice.
I'm Carolyn Moore, and, uh, I'm here speaking on the behalf of my husband, James Moore. We, uh, I'd just like to state our case from fifty-eight years ago, okay? I'm not gonna be over five minutes. Okay, uh, we've been married for fifty-eight years and have four wonderful, non-perfect children, who are productive citizens in Georgia and Alabama. So the land that is in question today has been in my husband's family for approximately a hundred years. Osborne Beany, my husband's great-grandfather, lived on the property. Along with being called Lee Road One, it is known as Beany Road, which is his grandfa- great-grandfather's, uh, last name. You might have guessed that James and I are in our late seventies and eighties, so having a desire to get our affairs in condition that would be less confusing and stressful for our four children, we thought it best to settle certain assets before push came to shove. Approximately one year ago, we decided to divide the eighteen-plus acres that are in question today into four equal parts and give them to our children. So with this in mind, we contacted Mr. Sprayberry, whom you all know, late last summer, along with two other surveyors we found in the book. At the time, they all were very busy and could not take on the pros- project at that time. It was explained to them what our plans were about dividing it into four parts, and it was suggested by them that we might need to check with county engineer Kendall Andrews and Auburn Planning Department. That's what, uh, each one of them suggested. So the term subdivision had been mentioned by them, and to make sure we could do what we wanted, I called Mr. Andrews at the county and explained our intent to split the land into four lots. He explained the difference between subdividing and subdivision. Four lots would be considered subdividing and not subdivision. You must, and this is what he told me, you must have less than, no less than thirty feet of frontage per lot. Surveyor would have to present drawing for approval, but he advised that I'd best check with Auburn Planning Department. Before we proceeded with plans and spent money on surveying, I called and spoke with, and I, with, uh, Mr. Jay Howell, and I spoke with Logan Kip. Mr. Howell gave no particular road or driveway specifications, but said that four lots or less would be fine for subdividing. Mr. Kip said essentially the same as Mr. Howell, but he mentioned black lots might be in order and mentioned something about three miles in the City of Auburn. On this information, we proceeded to hire Mr. Sprayberry to do the work at his earliest convenience. Once Mr. Sprayberry drew a drawing and presented it to us, we thought he had done a perfect job. The lots were equally divided, and that's what we wanted. But once the drawing was taken to the planning department here in Auburn, things can, came to a halt. We since then have talked to Logan Kip, who has never denied that our original conversation way back when took place, and for that, I'm grateful. During our recent conversation, Mr. Kip used the term sixty-feet-wide road. Of course, we were shocked when that came up. And seeing that we live in Auburn, and we live on Wright-Simeon Road, we travel over Tree Road, we don't see no sixty-feet-wide roads in Auburn. Now, if there are some, I haven't seen them. I haven't written down those sixty-foot wide. So to ask a person that just wants to divide up eighteen acres of land to put in a sixty-foot wide road is asking much. And I know you've heard that you just can't fight City Hall, but I'd like to add, I know City Hall can have mercy. Thank you.
All right. Well, this doesn't require a public hearing, so...
Could I say something about this?
Uh, are you the engineer?
I'm surveyor, is that...
Oh, sure, yeah, go ahead.
Um, well, I've known the Moores, I've known Mr. Moore, uh, ever since I was a little kid, but I've known the Moores a long time. They're friends of mine, and I've surveyed for them before. And so they came to me with this, and they told me what they wanted, four equal lots, as equal as I could get them, and to have four access strips to get in there as equal as I could get them. And so we went out there and surveyed the property, the boundary, and we, and I made a drawing showing, uh...
That's what we see, that's what we see here, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Now, that property is like, like we've been told here, it is, it is down on the very edge of the planning jurisdiction. It's down on the very edge of Lee County. It's within about a half a mile of Nodisola. So, uh, it's way out there, and, and the way that I see this could happen is, and I've, I've talked to the, uh, engineering department at Lee County, and they don't have a problem with it that I know of, but what we can do is have a joint driveway easement, have, have maybe one or two accesses off of the road, whatever it takes, and then come in and get on those strips and go in there to those four lots. They're not trying to develop anything or make any money, they're just want a family subdivision for their four children, and so we would certainly appreciate it if we could get a waiver on this.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks. A discussion or a motion on that? I think that sounds like it's a reasonable thing to accommodate.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve WZ two zero two-two dash zero zero four.
Second.
Okay, a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries. You have the waiver. Okay, so that brings us to the end of the meeting. Uh, I don't have, and, well, I just have a question. Do we know anything about the, uh, status of this, uh, short-term rental thing in the court system? Does anybody have any idea on that at this point? Okay, just had a question on that. Anything from the staff? Okay, we stay adjourned.